All right.
Okay, so um I was saying that is when you were just talking about the time of trouble. I actually had um the Lord had given me a dream. And in the dream, I actually physically escaped the beast power just off of his word. And it was later confirmed for me that um you know Ellen White has in great controversy. The chapter um our only safeguard. And she talks about scriptures how that will be our only safeguard in in that time. And so, you know, I've been really like thinking about scriptures. Um memorizing scripture here and there and just a lot of scripture just being recalled to me very often. Lately, just claiming the promises, Lord show me it's not enough to just recite, so I'm not just memorizing regurgitate. But you have to also claim the promise as you, as I recall his word, as I think about his words. I need to also claim them, can the promise of his word, but anyway, I just wanted to share that because I was just like you were saying in the time of trouble and it was so comforting in this dream, it was like. I mean, I was so happy, I was just, I had this freedom, this joy in my heart, like it was literally God's word who rescued, that rescued me and it was when everything was like. I was being chased after, you know, I was like at the point where like I was just so like, you know, like no way out and boom, God's word came and rescued me just on his words alone.
I truly believe that. And it sounds simple, it sound like, you know, how is this gonna make me healthy? Or how is this going to um have more life? But when we go back to what it says, he spoke and stood fast, which is a creative power. It um he said, my spirit is is life, is truth. So every time you utter those those scriptures, you breathe in life. And when you take it literal for what it express, you're gonna get your mind is just like certain kind of neurons is gonna take place, it's gonna be like endorphins going off that you almost not gonna know what to do with yourself, it's like I've been reading this all my life and they might have told me this, but now it's really like it's hidden home because you're seeing the things that contrast to that. And I mean, it could be just a little deviation, just to kind of sway you off to like, it don't really mean that. And people follow that and you see, oh, there's a big crowd going there, so they must be right or something. But when you go back to scripture again, it tell you broad is the gate of destruction, so you really gotta weigh out everything. Leave no word unturned.
Well, like I had told Lorraine also, the Lord had already told me probably like four months ago or so. He really put it on my heart that I need to study, study to show yourself approved of the scripture that he had revealed to me. And of course, I knew their scripture, you know, but he it it had, it was a specific instruction in the scripture at this time, not just the words. It was like, no, study to show yourself approved. And I also had another dream that was in line with the same instruction. So he has been already showing me that I need to be studying and really understanding his word and I just, so that's where I'm at right now is just. And like Lorraine, you know, I I told her, my thing is, you know, I just wanna make sure that everything I'm getting is true. You know, I have to, that's why I'm like, let me just study it out, let me study, let me under, help me to like, I need to just help. I need the Lord to help me to understand and to guide me by his spirit and truth so that you know, there's no room for error, we're counseled, you know, we've been counseled forever about error, about deceptions, about all these things, you know, so we have to really be on guard for those things. And I think we have an individual responsibility to make sure that we are practicing and understanding truth. And not just being, you know, spoon fed, whatever this or that. And whatever messages we are hearing, we need to make sure that they are that they, like I said, that they are true, truth messages, not just. You know, that's our responsibility anyway, so that's what I know that like I need to be doing and that's kind of what I'm just doing right now and I used to worry about, not worry, but I used to like set aside a specific, like, okay, I'm gonna read this much or whatever, or like sometimes I would just read until I felt like I got what I needed. And the Lord just kind of showed me like, you know, like I know Ellen White talks about this too. Just taking one verse at a time and understanding the thought behind the verse. Instead of reading like, you know, a certain amount of chapters or whatever and getting no value from it. It's more, it's more valuable to get something out of one scripture than reading all this and not getting anything. And so I tend to get kind of anxious, like, oh, I need to like read more, I need to like, you know, like I'm telling you, I haven't. There's so much that I need to study and understand, there's so many things that like um I'm feeling like a little bit overwhelmed, like wow, cuz every time God show me something new, I'm like, okay, I gotta stay that out. I gotta understand this, I gotta understand, I gotta study this, that, whatever. And I find myself not fully getting the full thing of one particular subject. So I think it was yesterday, God really just was like, okay, you know, don't be anxious about wanting to attain everything, you're not gonna attain everything before he comes. There's gonna be things still that, you know, are probably have been untouched. But just do what I can do in this moment with just the understanding that I have and taking my time to learn and understand. Even if it's just a little bit at a time each day to just study and understand little bits and pieces and not worry about why don't understand, understand the whole sanctuary doctrine, or I don't understand completely about dress reform. Or, you know, like, these are things that, you know, the Trinity thing, like we talked about. I still haven't even finished that, you know, so there's like so much, I'm like, man, my mind is like, there's this, 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 this. And it kind of feels overwhelming at times. And so right now, I'm just trying to take my time and do little by little, just whatever I can acquire for that day, that moment. And that's where I'm at with Hebrews, and that's kind of just what I'm doing right now.
The only thing I would say to what you're saying right there that was kind of like kind of keep you from being discouraged in that regard, it's kind of like what I was telling you that you know, you put all the food on the plate that you're gonna eat to satisfy you. But you don't eat all of it one time with one spoonful. Is taking a little bit at a time till you finish it. Another way I like to tell people about it, you know, like it may seem like I'm giving you a lot of stuff and you being overwhelmed, I said, don't feel that way. It's like we got bookshelves, you don't like read the whole book one time, you put it on the bookshelf. Is there, is that you reach it, you can get it anytime you get ready, you work up in the middle of the night and you like, I need to go back and finish up what I was reading that, you got it there. It's just making it a little bit easier than you having to go purchase the book, go to the store and buy it or go online and then ship it to you and stuff like that. That's the the go between part that you're cutting out to get more to the source of what you're trying to get to. But the other thing that I was gonna say is that like I'm saying again, that it's, it says the beginning of wisdom is to know God. And when I say know God, that's like his physical attributes, his character attributes. And when you're now reading what you're reading and it's in reference to God or Christ, it's like leveraging off to say, hey, this thought that I have, it don't, he don't have that kind of character, so I gotta reframe this in my mind. Relinquishing that thought because that's not him. And once you establish that, you're gonna see a lot of things that were hard to understand, or you wasn't really settled in what you're trying to understand. It's just gonna like jump out at you, it's going like crazy for like almost stressing myself for no reason when this word is just clear. As I'm saying, I had a Trinitarian mindset and I came into the lightness of the Father, Son. And I picked up the Bible after that and I was reading it and it was like, is this the same Bible that I've been reading all the time? Cuz it's like, I didn't see that before. And so I'm saying, having a doctrinal, educational teaching in our mind, it will block the straight scripture and words and meaning that you walk away like, nah, that ain't that, this what this mean. And a good example of that is the disciples, they will ask you walking with him, listening to every word, taking notes and everything. Keep telling him he gonna die and like Peter's like, what are you talking about? I'll draw this sword so fast that they wouldn't even think to be trying to come and kill you. And even up until the point where he cut the man ear off and he untied himself and put the man's ear back, he's still thinking, this ain't real, I'm I'm living a nightmare or something. And it didn't really sink home until the rooster crow three times. And Christ had told him exactly that was gonna be prophesied that happened to you. This now, he had to contemplate with that guilt in his heart. So I was telling Lorraine that we're told that Peter and 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 Judas, they both come from the same type of mindset, but they dealt with things differently. Judas took the guilt and like, you know, I've gone too far, there's no way he'll save me now. He took it in his own hand and said, all right, I'm gonna take him out. Peter was like, he told me that I was gonna do this and I let him down and I really wanted to be first in this kingdom and stuff like that. And I just, I missed the mark. But even with Christ saying that, he also gave him some sense of assurance to tell him that, look, even though you did all of that, I'm still here for you. And I think that's what gave him something to ponder on in his guilt that he was so reverent of it that he said, if you don't crucify me, don't do it the way you did, my Lord, you gotta do me upside down. So that's how that worked. So right now, I'm like, that's another thing. What I find is that you gotta study by words. And when you study by words, even if it's like a dialect or something like that, you're gonna be more in tune with the way the language is used. That now, when you go back to the scriptures with that theme of understanding, it's just gonna come out clear to you, like um one that I found out that I had on my bookshelf trying to figure it out and then nobody spoke about it to for me to catch it or whatever. And I would say if you had say go to descriptions and and pull this out, I would have never really know how to do it because I didn't know the language that's gonna give me these scriptures that's gonna tell you this is what this really mean. So the thing that was catching me was um the four winds that be holding back. And there's another spot, I guess, in Spirit of Prophecy where it's talking about the four winds of strife. And I took every place that it had that. And I've came up on a quote where she basically tell you that is human passion. And when I saw that, when I see what's happening in the world right now, you can't tell me that that's not what it is. And that's in in its simplicity, human passion. If God ain't there to hold it back, they would do all kind of stuff to you. I mean, you go all the way back to Genesis, don't brother, kill the other brother. If it happened way back then and we so far removed from God now, what you expect should be happening now? Or another one that I'm gonna probably cut it off now, is the the one about where it said there was war in heaven. And I've had images into my mind that say, okay, he must have had nuclear weapon and all this kind of stuff and all that there. But now that I have a better understanding of God's character, God ain't gonna do that. Plus, we told, what is the greatest the greatest power in the world? Anybody know what the greatest power in the world is?
I know it's love.
Correct. So why would God resort to these things that like they only last for whatever point of it being done? If he used love to generate what he's trying to do to lead that thing into what it is to come to him, that's the most powerful thing. That war in heaven and then taking what I learned with winds of strife, a lot of that has to do with communication, the words that people are using. So the war was it was a battle of words. When we go to the Garden of Eden, it was a battle of words there too. He said that ye shall not surely die, so it's God's word and the serpent's word. Which word you gonna hold fast to?
And I just wanted to add this to um what you're saying about the words. I've been doing that a lot lately with Spirit of Prophecy. Because you know Ellen White, her, and it's amazing, like, I don't know. She has like a limited education, right? Like grammar school education or something?
Third, third grade level.
Yeah, and it's interesting because I don't understand a lot, like the way she writes the 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 words, the vocabulary that she uses. I'm like, wow, like for someone who doesn't, who has no education really, and I find myself having to look up a lot of words before I would just kind of like, ah, breeze by, okay, well, I don't know what that means, but I, you know, the general context is enough for me to suffice, you know, like, and I wouldn't look up the word. And now I've been, as I come to it, and it's like, it's like the Lord stops me right there, like I I can't go forward, he's like, okay, he just stops me at the word. And I'm like, okay, I better look it up, I just have this conviction, I need to look the word up, I need to understand what that word really means. And it has, it gives much more understanding to what what's being said, you know, what the context is, like, oh, okay, that's what that is. And with all of her writings like right now, cuz I'm reading um Desire of Ages. My first time ever reading Desire of Ages. Um I mean, I grew up Adventist, but never like actually read Spirit Prophecy like I think in school we had dreams, sorry, ages, but I honestly don't really remember. And if we, even if we did, it's probably maybe little bits and pieces here and there or just throughout the semester, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and so I'm actually reading it, for me, it's like truly like cognitively for me, it's the first time, like I don't have any recollection of like ever knowing what it says in the book. So I'm reading it and as I'm reading it, I'm just, these words are just coming and I'm like, oh, I don't know what that, what is this, what is that? And so anyway, I just wanted to add to what you were saying about that, cuz that's definitely what has been my experience lately, that I had this conviction, I need to understand the words.
I would say that that's what he's calling us to do. Everything is in the the word in the sense that if you wanted to have a contrast to that, um the Tower of Babel, people were speaking words, but they weren't understanding because they were speaking different language. If you take that and apply it to what you see what's happening right now, it's the same thing, just on a more um individual cause for strife and and um dissent because it's like you trying to communicate with the person and they're not receiving what you're telling them.
I wanted to add something else, I'm trying to remember what I was gonna tell you. They have to do with the words. Uh I was thinking about something right, right after that and I forgot what I was gonna tell you.
Go down the alphabet to help you remember.
Oh, man, we were talking about the words, oh. Oh. When you're talking about Tower of Babel and how the they didn't understand. And that's another thing that that God gave me um the scripture and kind of Lorraine, you when you were telling, I was expressing this to you before, when I said, well, I need to understand about this, about these things, or I told you, there's things I don't understand. And you were like, well, you can't say, well, just, you know, do it and you'll, it'll make sense. And so she's telling me like, you know, and not, not that what you're saying is wrong, I'm not saying that it's wrong. It's just telling, we'll just do it and you know, the, you're like, it'll all come together, like you understand. And I was explaining to her, I said, but I need to understand, but I don't wanna do anything not out of true conviction. I don't want it to be like I'm doing all the reforms for the sake of saying I'm doing the reforms. Like, I I need to, I want to understand and I want to understand how this applies to Jesus, what he wants for me, what he desires for me, so that I can walk out these principles of obedience from a the right, you know, how can I say, from the right place, not just a legalistic, you know, uh how can I say?
Righteousness by faith.
Right. So I'm just, the other day, uh the Lord gave me a description that's made me think about our conversation, Lorraine. And I can't remember offhand where it is from, but it's uh, it says wisdom is principle. It's in Proverbs and it says, in all thy getting, gain understanding.
That's
I was like, wow, so that for me was like, yes, Lord, that's that's exactly what I was saying. I want understanding, I want, I need understanding about things. And I think it's good, I think the Lord wants us to have, you know, he he will provide us the the understanding as long as we are asking and want to know and understand. And I do wanna know and understand. Um and I know, I'm sorry, I know it doesn't really have anything to do with the Tower of Babel, you just reminded me
Yes, it does.
They understand. So
That's another thing that I would tell you. Everything interconnects, it's just that you have to go deep in some areas to see where the connection is, but that's why you got a whole Bible, that Genesis one, all the way to Revelation twenty two, twenty one. You could see the connection if you go deep enough, it's all there. But
Yeah.
For us to understand some things, we have to get them in bits and pieces to put them together to see that whole thread line of the truth. Um there was something I was gonna say because of what you were saying. Don't be afraid to make a mistake. God is not waiting for you, all right, you got it wrong, I'm gonna hit you, you got it wrong, he ain't like that.
That
Once you be free, not free like how the devil would tell you free, but free to go out and experience that even if it were to be a sin, you um take that opportunity to step in and say, look, I have sinned and fall short. I'm asking for forgiveness. And I think that that concept will give us to know that you can't just like run on your own, you need his power. And if it's not but just that to rein you in to say, look, you either walk with me or you walking on your own. And
I have been experiencing that so much lately and and the Lord has also showed me multiple times now, not by might nor by power, but by my spirit. Because I have a very bad problem with that, with looking to self, relying on self, condemning self constantly. My my biggest fear is to make a mistake. I hate hate making mistakes. I I will waver and waver on something and be in distress about it because I don't want, I prefer that I'm gonna make the wrong choice, the wrong mistake. And I really, really, I'm like, I need to know, I need to make sure, you know, I'm doing the right thing with this, 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 this. I just don't like doing what things wrong. I wanna do everything right.
You're all wired for truth. If you have two um robbers that were working together, they would tell the truth to make the communication or whatever they're trying to do together. That if they were to lie each other, then the task won't get done. So everybody's wired to truth. That's why you do that. But see, the devil knows that. And what he does is he has to play on your mind by allowing you to basically incarcerate yourself to allow you to condemn yourself, cuz if you think about it, he has no power to like take you out. He has to um separate you from the power that will overcome his power. So he's constantly distracting you and constantly like puts you in a vulnerable position that he'll have the upper hand. Puts you in a vulnerable position that he'll have the upper hand.
Yep, and I think, and that's part of it is looking. It's a self-righteous spirit, it's it works by by. It's a, what is it, faith, righteousness by works? It's that same spirit of like, oh, you know, like Ellen White says this too. He's, he, he wants us to look at ourselves. And say, oh, what we're not doing and trying to earn and trying to attain. Salvation by our own way, even though we don't necessarily consciously think, oh, I'm trying to like, for my way to heaven. But we do it in other ways, you know, just the spirit of condemnation. And looking to myself and every time I sin, every time I fall and like. That is a tactic as well, because he doesn't want us to look to Jesus and we see the power from Jesus, he wants to keep thinking. Us in our mindset, keep thinking that we can do something. That we can make right choices all the time, that we can do this on our own, do that on, and it's not true. And that's the thing, the spirit that I struggle with. To overcome, overcome that spirit and and put all of my trust, throw myself upon the rock. Jesus and just. Give it to him and surrender to him and because I can't do it and I keep trying to. And guess what? The Lord showed me, yes, was yesterday? The scripture, um, where he's talking, Jesus talking to the disciples and they're asking. He was saying it's it's easier for the, a man to go through the eye of the needle, a camel spoke through the eye of the needle than for a rich man to be saved. And you, you know, then they were talking about like, well, who, who can be saved then, you know, and he's saying. With man is po- is impossible, without all things are possible. And he also talks about, I don't know, I don't know if it's in the same story, but he talks of um, how many will try. But they won't be able to be, like many will try, but won't be, won't be saved and. From, I guess, one perspective, I used to think like, man, like that's discouraging, but then it like it clicked. He showed me this revelation some time ago, but it, he showed me again recently, like. That the reason why is because they're trying, the key word was they try, they will try. To, and I don't remember the scripture verbatim. But he was showing me like, it's not, it's because it's not by trying that they attain heaven or salvation. But many people will try to and that's the thing, it's not in me, with me, it was my trying, I've been trying to. Instead of just surrendering. I don't know, you know which one I'm referring to? As many will try to enter, but will not be able to.
No, but let me see if I can figure it out. I'm on the time clock, it's about to finish.
Oh, okay, is it, was it three more minutes?
It's about five, five and a half minutes.
Okay, we'll just finish this. But that was just my thought on that, was that it's that same spirit of. The enemy trying to convince us that we we somehow. You know, can do this, that, or the other, and when we don't do it. It's like we're utterly, they're utter failure and that's like I said, I just deal with that. But the Lord has given me victory over that, praise God. Um, I'm, he's giving, helping me with not to have that condemnation and that. Like you're saying, always like needing to be right in every single solitary thing I do. It's a works mentality.
See, cause that come from education. We were educated that way. And it wasn't the true image of God, so. You having to rewrite your brain to be able to. Function in a way that that's not a problem, but they have the um. Eighteen eighty-eight message, that can help eradicate that.
Oh, is that where they were having a debate over righteousness, the righteousness by faith?
And so that message didn't resonate within the church structure at the time then. Forward down to us, it actually, because of not receiving that. That blocked the opportunity for God to come, or Christ to come.
Yes, that's another thing that the Lord kind of put on my heart some time ago, is to study righteousness by faith. Cause I didn't really understand it at all, I started studying it, but.
The direction is by faith is by the words. See, if you take the word. And when I also talk about definition, I'm talking about how the Bible uses that word, like. He told us that. You used to eat of my bread, he's, he's making reference to tell you that his word is bread. So every time when you partake of words. Um, a person was bringing it to my attention. You gotta take a breath in to be able to speak, cause you you exhale when you talk. If you try to talk when you inhale, you won't make the proper sound. So this is how it work, even on a physiology level, so um. You have to. What I found is, um, you have to look at the Bible with anatomy and physiology too, because. That functionality. Because you trying to be transformed back into his image. He has a physical image that he got a head, eyes, nose. Now this substance is made out of, he didn't tell us what that substance is, but we know that that substance is divine. We know now, Christ, he got flesh like us, but the divinity is within the flesh. So in Peter, he tell you that you can be partaker of the divine nature. So the divine nature is the unseen attributes. Like a fruit of the spirit. Kindness, you can you see kindness, where kindness at? It's an unseen realm. Your character, I can't see your character, I can see how you manifest, how you behave and say that's your character. So it's understanding the unseen realm and the things that kind of tagged to that are words. Spirit unseen, words, I don't see them coming out your mouth. But I hear the vibration and it makes sense to my mind and I can bring all these things together. So maybe. Like do a note where. You take note of. How the Bible uses that word. And I think by developing that kind of vocabulary. It'll make it where you feel more confident by the words. Instead of like these present truth ministers, like they fearing people into God, that never works. They get excited. The, like how we have this pandemic, it lasts for a period of time and then you get weary and you like, look, man, ain't nothing happening, I'm gonna keep on doing what I'm doing. But when you in love with something, it's sustained, it just. You could tell me whatever you telling me, I'm still gonna do it, cause I'm I'm in love with it. It doesn't distract you from it. But it's at the one minute mark.